I'd like to call the meeting order if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any subtractions from the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Our armed forces are here, or I mean our... Come on up.
A little shorter handed than we normally are at this event. The sheriff sends his regret that he was unable to attend tonight. Circumstances he couldn't control.
Okay.
Sends his apologies and... And me.
(laughing).
What do you have to do, I guess?
Yes. So with me tonight is many of you have had a chance since we're a little bit into this. 2018 had a chance to meet Deputy Nate Arcan. He is one of the two deputies that are assigned to Columbus. The second deputy is he may or may not get here anytime soon. He's currently working personal injury accident within the city of Columbus right now. And but that is Deputy Tony Nelson. And Tony, Deputy Nelson has been a contract car for Columbus in the past. And so he spent a couple of years getting some seasoning and other experience and then he came back to here in Columbus. So I'll let Deputy Nathan Arcan give a quick little introduction of himself.
As Commander first mentioned, my name is Nate Arcan. I grew up in the Forest Lake area, so I'm pretty familiar with Columbus. I've been with the sheriff's office for four years. The first six months of my career here were in the jail. I've been on patrol for three and a half years. So this is my first year working the Columbus contract. And last year I worked Anover contract. And before that I was countywide. So been in Columbus a lot as a countywide. So I'm pretty familiar with the area, like I said. I have a bachelor's degree from St. Cloud State. Did skills training over there as well. And picked up my job, like I said, in the jail, you know, County Sheriff's Office in 2014. So I am a member of the Mobile Field Force team, which is kind of like a crowd control unit. So that's the one specialty position I have.
Okay. Any, any things going on in Columbus we should know about?
Same old, for the most part. Running ACs keeps us pretty busy.
Good.
Do tell.
Traffic is from the metro. So for the most part it's not locals. They're coming in from different areas. So I keep in contact with the security in the camera room there quite often and update them for any warrants or drug users or gun-related. So yeah, try to keep it locked.
How about the cocaine issues? Is that heroin, has that been?
Yeah, I've gotten a couple cocaine arrests coming into running ACs. Again, they were out of towners. Couple locals with methamphetamine. Outside of that, the couple heroin arrests I've had two were out of towners, so passing through for the most part.
Okay.
I want to speak more of a countywide perspective on methamphetamine is, is back strong. Never really went away in Anoka County, but it's the last few years, it's, it's presence, just the quantity that, that is around and that we're finding is quite high. It's not the, back from the 90s and early 2000s, it's, it's not the homemade backyard meth. This is meth that's coming from Mexico. Majority of it is big processes down there. It's coming mostly the stuff that we're seeing in Minnesota and specifically Anoka County is the big crystal that's produced in, in large quantities in Mexico and then shipped here. Minnesota has become kind of a major hub in the especially methamphetamine trade. Used to be that the cartels would bring it to places like Chicago and then from there start heading out. Excuse me. Heading, go to Chicago and then would come into our area. But it's, we're finding that they're skipping Chicago and coming directly to the metro and then we're, there's distributors, cartels distributing from our areas. We do have the Anoka Hanipin Narcotics and Violent Crime Task Force, very active in the area and have had some pretty significant arrests in, in the past couple of years and that remains strong. So meth is, is very prominent in this area. Heroin continues. Heroin and other opiates continue to be an issue. We are seeing a fairly, you know, steady amount of overdoses. We're having fewer deaths because of Narcan. The ambulances are, are saving a lot of people. Are, we've had some, some saves with our deputies. And that, so we're, I think, we're, the amount of deaths have been reduced, but it's still, obviously, still a problem. And so all over, but it is a problem in this area. But that's the most prominent that, that we're seeing. Marijuana is...
Always there.
Always. You know, it's still, still, still here, but the top two are opiates and, and marijuana are here.
If you had any more gun shooting incidents with neighbors, disturbing neighbors that pop out of you?
We've not recently and unfortunately, I don't think we've had any in this particular area recently. I'll look it through and I'll leave some, some numbers for the first quarter of this year. When I leave, I make a couple of reports that I can leave behind and talks about summarizes the calls that we've been out and, you know, you have a large variety from accidents to domestic assaults, to DUIs, crashes. So you widen the variety. The PR can kind of con... Probably the biggest concentration of, you know, if you're looking at one spot is the freeway corridor, which includes running ACs in the gas station there. And it's just, it draws, you know, free, when you're that close to a freeway, it draws, it draws attention. So we're spending, our deputies are spending a fair amount of time focused in that area. They never get a call if they're not.
Okay.
Is there, is there still a larger quantity of stolen cars being retrieved out of there too?
As far as running ACs specifically, not necessarily just because it's running ACs. The first stolen I recovered came because of a Verdict. And I think again that they were passing through them. I think they actually had a D.E.S. method. I intercepted that vehicle. Two were dumped off of Potomac in Lake. They were stolen out of Forest Lake. Again, I think a lot of that has to do with the freeway access. Our investigators are working that case pretty hard and Investigator Colin Check has a whole board of suspects listed. And he's working with agencies in Heflin County as well, because a lot of it's tied to Golden Valley area. And these smaller dealerships that we have in Columbus are big time targets for these suspects because it's, it's just easier for them to access the vehicles. The vehicles are older, they're easier to break into and get started, so.
Because last, I think it was last fall, they told us that there was an increase in stolen cars from St. Paul being retrieved in the parking lot at running ACs. So probably using them for transportation to get there, so that...
It's been, keep an eye on the reports. It's been a little while since we've had one dumped there. Some of it might be running ACs involved, but some of it, it's also the parking lot. So it's a convenient parking lot to dump cars.
Talking with Al Newman, our fire chief, we had some, I'm on the fire board and we had some questions about the dispatch and Elizabeth, I don't know, has that been addressed or Brian, did Al ever get ahold of you about?
We had discussed that earlier this year and I could wait for...
Okay, so you haven't, you haven't got ahold of you anyways?
Exactly.
Okay. So we need to probably see how that's actually going down with dispatches for, for Forest Lake Fire because they get called as well as, we're not sure whether they're calling them just because you, you're not around or if, well, we're not sure why, so.
And I was wondering, when you brought that up, I'd like to know if we're requesting them to come out or if that's something that dispatches do.
Yeah. So we should probably still get to the bottom of that. And then we, we were patiently waiting then for all our proactive time reports from our new system. How, how we doing?
Well, you get some numbers, but...
It's not there yet or?
Well, this is what we're able to produce and I've hit it in a couple of different formats. So if you can tell me which ones are readable and if you think, you know, the option is still, my administrative assistant is able to do, and they are massive when the reports get in there, she can gather various info. So if there's specific numbers or, you know, there's a chance that we can try to get a report that, that suits what you're looking for. But it might take sitting down with, with her and actually being able to figure out, can she do what you're, you're asking?
Okay.
And the hours, the new bank of hours that we have has been spread out and been moved around?
Well, it's my understanding that there's been some flexibility on that and flexing some of the 12-hour shifts to start a little bit earlier, so you have a little variety in that.
Okay. All right. You guys have any other questions?
Nope.
How are we doing on our fellow on 172nd Avenue?
I haven't checked on that case recently. I know, I know it was being looked into.
Okay. He's still going strong, so.
All right.
I know it. The only other thing is, as far as county goes, we'll see some movement within our administration towards the end of the summer. One of our commanders is retiring, and Paul Summer, been with the sheriff's office for, I think, will be 33 years. And so he'll, he'll be retiring this fall and with that, there'll be a little bit of movement. One of the lieutenants, my current lieutenant, Wayne Heath, who is in, currently in the Criminal Investigation Division as a lieutenant, will be promoted to commander come August. And he'll be going to the administrative division where Commander Summer will be retiring from. And then one of our detectives will be promoted to lieutenant. And he'll be, he's actually going to go to the admin division in the current admin lieutenant and be coming over to the Criminal Investigation Division. So a little shuffle, you know, when, when someone in the upper, upper ranks retires, there's a lot of shuffle let goes with that. So a little bit of change, not as much as we've had in some years past and, you know, we're going to be pretty stable for a few years. We always think that.
So you're aware of the traffic changes that are going to be going on with the freeway as well as 54? So there, I don't know whether there's going to be any issues with, you know, the rush hours and backing up and I don't know.
I know the patrol division is, is well aware of those changes and trying to stay on top of them and I got some of the printouts on their, their design and their plan and...
Yeah, we're anxiously waiting to see how that goes over.
Yes.
So, okay. Well, thanks for coming and giving, this is our annual update.
We can give more if you want.
Yeah, stay in touch. I mean, it is really good when you guys come and tell us what's going on and we can give some feedback. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Hope I don't see you on the road.
I've spent a fair amount of time here in the end of 17 and beginning of 18. I don't know, I had some meetings going on.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. All right, thanks for coming, guys.
All right.
Thanks for all your hard work. Okay, planning commission report. Who do we have for that? Jesse?
The planning commission met on April 4th and all members were present.
Just a second, Jesse. Give me one second for Brian to finish up there.
That's right.
All right, continue. Thank you.
We had two public hearings to start the evening. The first was for Tom Swenson located at 7643 Camp 3 Road. He requested a renewal of his IUP for the operation of a used car dealership. The planning commission voted unanimously to send it forward to the board for approval.
Okay.
The second public hearing was for Century Fence Company located at 14839 Lake Drive, who requested a conditional use permit amendment allowing them to add an office and a shop warehouse area on their property. The office addition is approximately 48 by 54 feet and the shop warehouse is approximately 29 by 99 feet. The planning commission unanimously, unanimously passed that up to the board for approval.
Okay.
Both applicants are here tonight.
Okay. Well, let's take the Camp 3 residential zone business first. Council have any concerns or questions?
I called the state of Minnesota today and did some checks on this. I've had a used car lot in Columbus and Mr. Swenson doesn't fall into much of the guidelines set forth by the state of Minnesota. One of the things is you can't, according to the state of Minnesota, you're not supposed to have a used car lot with a residential home. So when I talked to the head of the licensing department today for used car lots, new car lots, whatever, she was, she was a little confused that this would even be allowed. And I asked her, well, what about your inspector? And, and they said if the city of Columbus sends this forward to them, then they figure it's okay. But, so I went through this and I think this should go back to the planning commission. And I also think the state of Minnesota should come out and inspect it. He doesn't have, there's no bathroom facilities, there's no, you know, there's no office in the barn. And so I think this needs to be relooked at. It's 20 cars a month. That's, that's what some of the dealerships on Lake Driver sell in, 20 cars a month. And that, those numbers work to be in a commercial building. So I'd like to see this go back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Get a little bit closer. And I've got a list of the things here and I should have probably made copies to give the rest to you guys, but...
So if you could, Bill and Danny, you guys know more about this than the rest of the other three here. The reason someone has a dealership is in a residentially zoned business is to do what? I mean, what's their...
Cheaper.
Just to save on...
If I, if I had my druthers, I'd rather be at working out of my house also.
Yeah. But I mean, so you do that and the, the state must have these rules about that for a reason so that people don't just do it to get out of paying taxes on their...
Like Bill said, he went through the rules. You gotta have a bathroom, you gotta have commercial, it says in the rules, you gotta have commercial property.
Yeah.
But with, there's an exception for every rule.
Well, and so when they, you set up a, and Danny goes through this. I've been through it down on Lake Drive when we built the building. We have to have X amount of spaces, five spaces it says, to display cars, which that probably works, but what are you going to do? Put the lions on the grass and dirt? It needs a handicap spot. You gotta have a handicap accessible bathroom. You gotta have, you know, all that stuff. And this doesn't qualify for any of that. And there is a neighbor that's concerned. My guess is if I knock on the doors down there and talk to the neighbors down there that they, this car lot idea, they wouldn't, you know, want that in their residential neighborhood. So I think we need to look a lot closer at those. There's a couple, three of these that are in the community that it's just not a good practice.
I think it's different than a car repair shop. I mean, there's a lot of car repair shops where...
It's the same as a car repair shop. You have customers coming and going.
Well, but you're buying, storing, selling, changing oil, antifreeze dumped out of a bad car, all that stuff goes on where...
Normally in a used car lot, Danny has one also, same with ours next door, you have somebody usually that's doing recon, changing oil, doing tires, getting the, propping the cars. It's actually probably as busy or it's sometimes busier than a repair shop can be. So, I mean, and 20 cars a month is, you know...
Yeah, I guess I'm just concerned about it not meeting the, the dealership criteria for the state.
Yep. The biggest thing she said today was that it's, according to the state, it's not supposed to be with residential, with the residential property. So...
All right. So someone, guys want to, I mean, we remand this back to the planning commission for further review or would we review contingent on not being a dealership or something?
The planning commission looks at our ordinance for zoning. The zoning just says we allow residential zone businesses. It doesn't say what kind of business. It says residential zone business. If you meet the criteria, you get a permit. It doesn't say that you can not get a state license, that you don't have to do all of that.
I'm sure it implies silently, it's got to be a legal business. Right, Bill?
But it's not up to the city to make sure that they have a state license to operate.
I get that.
So in our, when we give out permits, we say that you have to, you know what I mean? It says Swenson and his employees and agents shall, shall comply with all local, state and federal laws, regulations and ordinances. So if he can't, then he doesn't get the...
Hey Jesse, if you wouldn't mind stepping back and we let the applicant come forward?
In this case...
Thank you, just, we'll be right back to you.
We are sending him here first and we're okaying it and they're assuming that this stuff that's covered here is covered there. And it's, we're not, we're not doing our...
Like for example, is, is he here today?
Yeah.
Are you on, come on up? So I, I think, I'll just state your name and address for the record and...
Tom Swenson, 7643 Camp 3 Road Northeast.
Good.
And I'd like to comment on a few of those things you mentioned.
Sure, just a second though. So if, we, last time we approved this, I think one of the conditions was is if there's a hazardous waste generator license needed, you'd get it? And did you ever get that?
No, I don't change enough oil to need a hazardous waste permit.
What is enough? Is there a definition of enough in, enough in the state statute or something?
I don't change oil on all the cars that I purchase. I pretty much change oil on my own cars.
Okay.
Why do I want to waste money on cars I'm selling?
Okay. Well, I, wasn't that part of the condition though that we, you had that or?
Might have been in there. I'd have to read it.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, I mean, but you know, I might change oil every so often, but it's not very often. My plan is to do as little as possible to the cars I buy.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the condition reads that he was to contact Nalca County Services to establish whether a permit is needed.
Okay. Did you contact them?
I think I did the very first time I came here, which was years ago, so I don't know what the outcome was.
Not after our meeting.
Never had to get one, so...
Okay. Bill, you're more up on this, is, is that a requirement of a dealership? Is to have a, you know, is that one of the requirements or not? I don't know.
That whole deal is minimal compared to the guidelines set down to have, to have a dealership to sell cars. Your residential, and I'm sorry about this, but your residential deal that you got set up for public is not set up for the public like the other dealerships are supposed to be. And, and, and a dealer license, you have to have these things.
Like I said, I'd like to address some of the stuff.
All right, go ahead.
First got my license, or was trying to get my license, I was dealing with the head guy at the state that covers the stuff. I don't remember his name, because it was years ago. And I was looking at several different commercial locations and he said, do this at your house. One of the things was get an office, get a bathroom, which I have both, in the barn.
There's a working bathroom in the barn?
Yes, there is.
And you have an office area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Had it since day one. So he, he put all these guidelines out there. I've met every single one of them and he said it was okay.
Was there anything about a separate address?
Um, I don't recall.
Okay. How about a sign out front?
I, yep, I had to get a sign, which I did.
I, there's no sign?
It's on the barn.
Oh, okay. Because only on one side of your mailbox is it labeled, the other side isn't. RT Auto or something?
I think it probably fell off. It was labeled on both sides at one time.
Okay. And is that the name of the dealership too? RT Auto?
Yes, RT Auto Sales.
All right. Okay. Anything else you want to address?
You know, he said it was okay to have it at the house. I came here, met other requirements and haven't had any problems.
Yeah. We, there was one complaint and I really don't know who the person was and it had to do with driving up and down the street or something and I'm not sure if that was the same person that complained about the speed limit, but, here we go.
Page 11.
Page 11.
Oh, and I, I don't actually sell 20 cars a month. I just thought 20, up to 20 cars at one time, so I don't ever go over. I don't ever have that many cars. I mean, for the past, I think, three months, I've sold maybe three cars a month.
Okay, so for the record then, that, some confusion about where the work's done. The work's done in the barn or in the garage?
Mostly in the barn.
Okay. That's the barn that has the doors that are all open?
Yep.
So how do you do that in the winter?
Pretty hard.
Yeah. And the bathroom and the office are in the barn or in the...
The barn. It's attached to the barn. Put an electric heater out there in the wintertime.
Okay. So the reason you have a dealership, because a dealership in my mind is a little bit aggressive for residential area there too, but you have that to facilitate buying and, so you buy a car without paying tax on it, right? Because you're not the end user and then you fix it up?
It used to be so I could go to Copart, you used to have to have a dealer's license.
Oh, okay. I get that.
As long as required.
Okay. But then when you buy the car, you'd be, you'd have to transfer the title, pay the sales tax, then whoever buys it would pay the sales tax again, right? That's kind of a negative to buy in for you.
A little bit.
Yeah. Danny, you know more about this too. So what are your views or what are you thinking, I know?
Well, he's, we okayed it for him for quite a few years. He's been good. He had one complaint from the neighbors, traffic. I don't know what we can do about traffic, you know? Bill's got some vital points.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I agree, Bill, if that, if it truly doesn't meet the definition of a dealership, then I would, I would agree with you, we got to get that fixed. You're telling me it, it would or to your best, your knowledge it would?
It did and it has. I mean, they come out, they inspect me, they've never said one thing to me about it not qualifying.
When's the last time they inspected that part?
Been a while. State's been having some issues, so there'd be...
You gotta try to get your tabs.
Do you have any documentation on that? They don't give me documentation.
I haven't been dis, been inspected, I think, for two and a half, three years myself.
Well, they just...
Inspectors come when they want to come and...
And I'm sorry, but isn't that up to the state whether or not I can have dealer's license?
Actually, it's a condition of this permit that you have a valid dealer's license.
Which I do.
And if there's a question about it, then it isn't entirely up to the state.
Okay.
It's a fair question for the council to ask.
Okay.
They don't issue the license, but they can see whether it's issued or not. There's a condition that says that you provide it to the city when, when issued.
So, right, Bill? No, right.
I did have a lengthy... I did have a lengthy conversation with the head gal today, so, and I explained everything and she said it doesn't qualify, so...
I mean, I would like to give you a chance to have, can you ask for an inspection so that you can give us something that says, yeah, we, we meet and it's not hearsay or us conjecturing, it's a piece of paper that says...
Yeah, I could see what I could do, but...
But, excuse me, when inspectors come out, inspectors inspect your papers, your titles and stuff like that. So it's got nothing to do with what we're requiring.
It's not, nothing to do with whether you qualify, whether you meet the definition of a dealer?
They inspect the papers, make sure you transferred everything, make sure you got the right twenty-one day permit and stuff like that. That's what inspector does.
Except Danny, she told me today, when they come out, they're supposed to be looking at structure and how everything is and where it's... And she said one of the things that would fail is residential property having a dealer's license. She says the state of Minnesota went...
I know you're, you're right there. You have, you know, even a commercial property have to have your own entrance and, and there's restrictions on the commercial property even.
And even, even at our place, you know, when we built ours, we built ours down there for three businesses. And when they came in, one business entered through the shop, we had to cut it, we had to, Tetrel came down, cut us in a door because they were not gonna allow us to have our license with that other business in that office. We had to cut a separate outside door for that business. And so that's what I'm saying. It, it, it seems, I mean, it just, I don't know. I guess I had a long conversation with her today and I don't know.
The city, I mean, the state requires Tom, me, or anybody who gets licensed, come down to the city and have them sign the paper that it would qualify to have a license there. Uh, I'm sure you, you signed it for Tom before, haven't you?
I do because the paperwork says, you know what I mean, does the zoning, does the zoning allow this type of business to happen in this district? And it, there's a couple of different boxes you can do. And, and this one is, um, it's allowed with permits. And so you have, and then we attach all the permits.
Without a permit, it would be allowed as a home occupation, right?
Correct.
But it's more than a home occupation, so it would need a residentially zoned business permit. So the question is, are you, is there, are you being charged any commercial property taxes for that?
From the city of Columbus?
Well, from the county. The county assesses.
The county, I imagine my taxes went up?
Uh, so let's pretend they did. So at that point, the property is being, I think, your point, Danny. The property, if he's paying that commercial tax on it, whether it's a hundred square feet or two hundred square feet or whatever they've chosen, Ken has chosen, then that would qualify as, at that point, it's the use, right?
Right, the assessor can take a, a property that is primarily residential and assign some commercial value. And in token, if something is primarily commercial, can also have residential component.
Like they've done with our luscious billboards and said one acre is commercial, whether it's on a farm field or not.
Right.
So, so to that, I think they, the state might, and I don't know how smart the state or the particular inspector is, but if you are paying that, uh, commercial tax on that, then I would think it would qualify. But I, I'm not an expert. I'd have to, I'd have to ask Ken or somebody.
I think our zoning ordinance doesn't, for residential zone business, it doesn't tell you what businesses you don't... For residential zone business, it doesn't have a list saying that you can't have this kind of business. It just says residential zone business.
Right.
It doesn't say that, or dictate what kind. It just says low end.
And so this process, the interim use process, is the process to assign it a temporary variance that will allow that to happen as long as these conditions are met?
With a sunset.
With a sunset, which is...
His first permit, I think, was only a year. I think your second was for three years and now this past one was for five.
Okay. Okay, so I think at this point, the question is, is whether it qualifies as a dealership criteria. I'd kinda like to see that answered. And if that's, I know we'd have to continue this for two weeks, but is that something you think you could get done?
I have no idea. I'd have to contact them, see what they say when they can send someone out.
Okay.
And who did you speak with?
Annette.
Annette who?
Her name's Annette. You want her phone number?
Yes.
Okay. I would, personally, I'd like to see that ironed out, cause if it, if we're approving a dealership, it needs to meet the, I think it needs to meet the dealership requirement. And then, you know, is, is the, is the complaint, is the complainant here tonight, Elizabeth, do you know?
And no, Josh is here.
Is...
Doesn't look like it.
No? And I would've liked to hear, heard from them instead of just a blind letter, just, cause it says something about, um...
Traffic.
Traffic and, I mean, when you test your cars, are you zipping up and down the Camp Three Road at a hundred miles an hour?
No.
Okay, so...
I do not. I can be started about the traffic on Camp Three. It's ridiculous and I'm not the one creating it.
Yeah, okay. No, and I, you know, I think we did change the speed limit, didn't we, to fifty? Is it posted yet?
Should be thirty.
Yeah, well, I could argue that one, but...
There you go, Dean.
I know. Let's just do one problem at a time.
Or maybe even twenty.
Yeah, and, but everybody wants people to go twenty in front of their house, but when they're getting someplace, they wanna go a hundred, so...
Yeah, that's what they do.
Yeah. I tried to go as fast as I could and I couldn't get over fifty, fifty-five till the next stoplight, but stop sign.
You should hang out at my place for a while.
Maybe I will. I gotta rate our gun. Maybe we should see what's going on.
You'll hear them coming.
Okay. So, but where do you test your cars?
I drive down the road. Test drives when I'm driving them or when my customers come.
Either.
Take a left, go down to Kettle River, take another left, go to the roundabout, come back.
Okay. Okay.
So isn't it a letter that you have a car lot on Highway twenty-three? Is that not correct?
That is not correct.
I got you confused with Dean.
Somebody else, whatever, you can ignore that.
Just leave that one to me.
So, so Elizabeth, the, the residentially zoned business has the option of a, um, a sign, but it's not a requirement that you have a sign.
It is in this, the...
I understand.
It's why it has a sign is because you would require it.
Right, so any requirements would be from your dealership requirements.
That is why I have a sign.
But, I, I mean, I just drove by this afternoon and I didn't see it, sorry. So, I mean, I, what there, I'd be curious to know, does, does it have to be out front? Does it have to be...
Has to be a certain size and visible from the road, which it is.
Okay. And, uh, you know anything about the entrance thing that Danny was talking about? A separate entrance or...
That's, you're due.
The separate entrance doesn't really qualify, cause the building's completely separate from my home.
He must be doing something right by his signs, cause a couple of years ago, I used to have people stop in and ask all the time where he was. And nobody stopped and asked where he was the last couple of years, so sign each one.
They got Googled.
Oh, that's good, me too, yeah.
Okay.
How many cars did you sell in seventeen, do you know? Sold in seventeen?
I have no idea. I've taught my head.
Nice to get a count. Yeah, I mean, you said three a month for the last three months, but you got twenty down here. I'm just wondering how many you are selling?
I, I guess my concern would be, it's, it is a business where customers come to the business. So if it's confusing at all, you're gonna have customers going to your neighbor's house and that would create a problem, so... I mean, I, I would like to see that, it's, I mean, you must advertise, come buy this car somewhere or...
I use Craigslist and it's pretty easy to find my place and with everybody with the cell phone and directions.
It's not been a problem.
They can't find my house. I don't know what's the problem is.
Conspic, conspicuously placed, so that's how they... Okay, um, so what do you guys wanna do?
Wait and see what the state says? I would like to...
Get to see something on that? Marky?
I gotta see some documentation from the state.
Says it's a dealership?
Dealership deal. But I'm not that keen. I wouldn't approve that thing going in there, um, four, five, six years ago. I just think it's opening up a can of worms that everybody can put a car dealership in a residential area. I just think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, and, and I get that he's not a Honda with, a Honda dealership with all kinds of people running in and out there and it's more of a low-key thing, but...
It is, but the next guy comes along, it might be a bigger thing and, cause there's no precedence on how big it can have it. I mean, it's...
Well, we, we have a few of those, don't we?
We do, and it's something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, there are a few of them that are out of control.
You know, I got a problem. There's a lot of businesses in the city that don't have customers coming to their residential area to buy a product or do a product, and that's a big thing too. If you have something like that, it should be in a commercial area, I think.
With customers coming?
With customers coming to your place. There's a lot of businesses where people have a one-man shop. There's no customers. You just drive a truck home or, um, I think that's a lot different.
Make something out in your barn or something?
Yeah. So, nothing personal, but that's just so I feel about it.
So, you, to just give them a, um, should we need a motion to get them to...
Yes, you would need a motion to continue for two weeks to investigate the state license.
Okay, it might take you more than two weeks?
Possibly. I have no idea what the state's gonna tell me or how long they're gonna take to come out.
Oh, we just make it a four weeks. Oops, I broke my pen.
We have a deadline of April twenty-ninth unless, has there been a sixty-day extension? We could extend that period with a letter to the applicant, um, for another sixty days.
I mean, I just wanna give you ample time to get this done, so...
Appreciate that.
If that, I think you can get it done by, what was it, April twenty-eighth, ninth?
Twenty, April twenty-ninth is the deadline. The next meeting is the twenty-fifth.
And if the state wasn't so behind, it wouldn't be...
Yeah, I get you, I hear you.
The dealer unit, you'll be okay. That's, uh, that's a licensing thing.
Sure.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I'd be open to a motion to continue it for up to sixty days, so long as he can get back to us with that dealer. Dealer ship.
I think it might make more sense than two weeks, just because...
I don't think you'll get it done in two weeks.
I don't think so either. He might investigate it. We might have questions about what he finds.
Yeah.
There might be some back and forth. We can send a letter, uh, to Mr. Swenson and, um, have it extended for sixty days.
I would, I recommend we do that and we wanna make a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So get back to us within sixty days on, that qualifies as a dealership.
How many people in Columbus have a conditional use permit to do the same thing I'm doing?
I don't think there are any. That's the problem. There should be a few more. There's a, well, there's some people who... Yeah, you know, it's the, the fixing cars, there's a lot of people fixing cars. I don't know how many are actually dealerships.
Several years ago, the city had a program where they wanted to have people essentially be legalized cause people were operating without a permit. And so they had essentially kind of an amnesty program where if they came in within a certain amount of time, made application for an interim use permit, just as you did, um, they could be essentially illegal use and continue. Um, so I, I don't know of any conditional use permits for the type of business that you're operating.
Not for, for repair, not for...
Lot, lot for repair, but not for dealerships.
Are you talking conditional use in the commercial zone or...
No, residential.
No, residential.
I, I, I don't know any dealerships that have a CUP.
No, or there's one out in Dulmec.
And they might run it as a home occupation.
So, the point is, 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 I think what we've just said is if you can say, hey, I qualify as a dealership, here's, here's an inspection thing, then I'm thinking I'm, I'm not gonna have a problem with it because it meets all our other residentially, residentially zoned business rules. So I think then it'd be alright. So I think it's kinda key that you get the blessing from the state that says, yeah, this meets the dealership requirement.
First thing I'm doing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Uh, one other question. If for some reason this doesn't work out, and I, I don't actually need a license to do what I'm doing from the state of Minnesota. I can still buy a car at Copart and sell them.
Yeah.
So then what do I need from you guys to do that?
What? You're saying if you weren't a dealership and you're just a repair shop?
Nope, not even a repair shop. I just go to Copart with no license. I buy a car, I bring it home, do what I have to do to it, to sell it.
If you sell it, it's a business.
It's a business.
It would still fall under the same rules.
The state though has some sort of definition though. You can sell two or three cars a year? I mean, there's some...
You just give it five.
Was it five? I don't know.
There's many rules. People talking about stuff, as long as you pay your sales tax, they don't really care. That's it. As long as they get their share.
Really? A government would act like that?
Well, yeah, you know that.
If you go to the city's zoning ordinance, it would still be a, a home business or residential zone business. And so we'd have some level of scrutiny. We would probably delete the condition related to a license as long as you were under that threshold. So that might change your conditions, um, to your interim use permit, but one would still be required.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, what would, have we defined a home occupation pretty closely?
Home occupation is clearly defined in the ordinance.
Okay.
But again, it doesn't say, it doesn't say home occupation is only a hairdresser or someone who works in their, you know what I mean, office. There's no, there's no definition of what type of business. There's just criteria. And as long as you can meet the criteria, then whatever your business is, whether you're making lawn furniture, dog houses, stuffing animals...
Yeah, we got all those.
Um, then, then you're, you know what I mean, you become a permit. So, that, that's what I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to get at is, so if you repair cars, paint cars, buff cars, you know what I mean, and that's your business, how do you, you know what I mean, are, unless you put some requirement in it, Bill, I'm not sure. Can you say you can have any business but car dealerships?
You could, you could have a list of prohibited uses. Um, that hasn't been the approach. The approach has been to look at the impact. So if the business has employees, if it has parking, if it has outdoor storage, those are impacts that we wanna be able to regulate and mitigate. If there, if everything's done in the house, like an accountant or someone who's, you know, word processing and there is no impact to the neighborhood...
Pretty simple.
Then we don't regulate it.
Okay.
That's kind of the dividing line.
Okay, makes sense. Alright. Hey, thanks for coming today.
Could we get the number, what you sold last year, yearly total? How many cars you're selling out of there is what I'd like to know.
That'd be a good number to have too.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
One more quick question. Um, your bathroom out there is running water. How's it tie in to the septic system or is it a holding tank? What do you have there? Is it ADA compliant?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, Jesse, come on back up. We had the, uh, request for, uh, those barns at Century Fence, right?
Yep, the second public hearing was for Century Fence Company located on Lake Drive. They requested a conditional use permit amendment allowing them to add an office and a shop warehouse area. Uh, the office is about forty-eight by fifty-four and the shop is twenty-nine by ninety-nine. And we passed that up to the board for approval.
Okay, any questions on that one? That one looked pretty straightforward. Okay, entertain a motion to approve or deny the conditional use permit, uh, amendment request.
I'll make a motion.
Oh?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Danny, I thought you were going there. Okay. You got lockjaw. Any other, uh, questions, concerns, comments? Okay, here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. Then you had some conditional or comprehensive plan info.
After our hearings, we discussed if we should readjust the land use lines that separate the light industrial from commercial or from the suburban residential, et cetera, in the freeway corridor. Planner Dean Johnson is going to draw a new map and bring it to our next meeting, which is next week. Here's what we came up with so far. We decided that we would keep everything north, this is on the, in the freeway corridor. And we'll have a map here in a second. On the west side of the freeway, on West Freeway Drive, that we would keep everything north of the freeway storage on West Freeway Drive as commercial. Would you point to that, Elizabeth?
So I'm sorry, Jesse, what you were talking about...
This is everything north of freeway storage on West Freeway Drive, including freeway storage, would stay as commercial.
Yep, it would be from, from here north would stay. Okay, so just to back up, the, the red, this is, this is a land use map. So the red represents commercial and purple represents light industrial.
Community retail?
No, that's only, that's only, this is land use. So in the company's plan, what we have is we determine land use. And the only two land uses that we determine, well, there's three. There's residential, commercial, and industrial. Red represents commercial, purple represents, um, industrial, and generally it's yellow. That's, a yellow or a different color for residential. We have an overlay district, which is what the hash marks are at the current time. We have an overlay district, which is what the hash marks are, um, at the current time. So, this is, again, strictly land use, after the comprehensive plan is adopted, then you'll have zoning districts, which is further down, further down the line. So, this is the, this is the current land use map that's in the comprehensive plan, uh, as it's guided, and what the planning commission talked about is, should we change the purple and red lines, because we're talking about the comprehensive plan? So, what Jesse has indicated, this is, this is West Freeway Drive, this is the way station, so they've talked about this area, and they determined that that should be purple instead of red, and then when they looked to the west, they, they felt that the properties just of freeway mini storage should also be purple, or have a zoning, um, I'm sorry, land use as light industrial.
What about on the other side?
I'm sorry?
What about on the east side? No changes?
Yeah, let's continue.
Okay.
Okay, everything north of the storage would be commercial, everything south and east on West Freeway Drive would be light industrial, so turning the red to purple. Everybody with that?
Yep.
Okay, everything up on the four quadrant, uh, the quadrants on the four corners would stays commercial, and everything west of Zurich Street, that's the street the track is on, would, uh, become suburban residential. On the east side of the freeway, and west of Hornsby, Hornsby's the white, will be commercial until just south of the Oxford Edition, which is that little line right there. Uh, and everything south of, and when we left that day, everything south of Oxford would become light industrial.
Would the overlay be moved up to that line, then?
The over, the over, the suburban overlay is down here.
Isn't there one up there, too, on?
So.
Nothing up there?
You said up to the, up to the city property would be industrial, and then, um, here, this is the Oxford Edition line.
And everything north?
And I think there, I think there was a question about Don, uh, Don Stanky's property, whether it was in or out.
Can I answer that? I called Don Stanky this week, and he said he was gonna send a letter to the council, I don't know if he did or not. He did?
He did.
Okay, so he, he wants to be in the light industrial also.
So, then that would, um, I'm pretty sure that would, the line would go straight across, it would go straight across and jog off, and then just, well, the city property would be commercial, I mean, I'm sorry, light industrial, or purple.
Or blue, depending on what angle you look at that. Okay, um, is that something that we're to be making a decision on tonight, or is that just informational?
Just information, because, uh, Dean should bring us back a new map.
Okay.
With the new colors and the new locations.
All right.
And then we'll discuss that more next week.
Be anxious to see that. Have the landowners been notified?
I'm sorry?
The landowners? Is that something that?
Well, we discussed it, we, you know, we had the freeway district sit down, but right now, it's just at a discussion stage, so the public hearing for the comprehensive plan will be in May.
So, that's when that'll be addressed.
But generally, there isn't individual letters sent out for a comprehensive plan amendment, it's a general notice. If we were to do that, we would have to send out a mailing once again to notify everyone.
I mean, you would hope people are paying attention, but, I mean, Danny Mike's here, so he gets it, but.
He's got a letter, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, Mr. Mayor, it's not typical, so you could decide to send wider notice, but it's not typical when a city's updating its comprehensive plan, because there's, you know, multiple discussions about it, it's on the agenda for.
Many days, yeah.
Many days and months, um.
I can see that as something someone said, I wasn't made aware of that.
But.
And, and they are made aware of it, excuse me, if, if there's a, uh, applicant-initiated, um, amendment, then, then they are made aware of it.
Okay. Just by.
Correct.
By procedure, right?
Yep. Notice is given, but when you do citywide, it's not.
Okay, anything else on their comprehensive plan talks?
What was that?
Okay. All right, you have one more thing on there, on the additions. Elizabeth, are you familiar with that? I don't know if Jesse has the rule of the driveway maintenance agreement? Is it not on your additions here?
So, there, there was an additional letter from Dan Mike indicating that he would also want retail, I'm sorry, um, light industrial, or from community retail to light industrial. And then there was, um, a letter from Jim and Bar Pryner indicating that they would also like to be, um, light industrial, which the planning commission did talk about, and, and that is in their, um, discussion. But what they're indicating, um, through this letter is having, having outdoor storage with no principal use, and, and that we don't allow in any district.
Right.
So, I, I don't think the re, I don't think the rezoning process is going to.
Help that.
Help that, because unless the council is gonna change the code to allow outdoor storage as a principal use, it still doesn't meet the criteria of the current zoning.
Okay.
You know, in the real world, we'd like to keep as much of that commercial as possible, but that way, far away from the interchange, it is never gonna happen.
There's some change, there's some changes coming up there, but I guess, Elizabeth, would, you're being, you being the zoning official, would, uh, say Danny Mike's property converted to light industrial, would that preclude him from not being, uh, retail?
So, once we, when we, when we adopt the land uses, then, then we'll move to zoning, and generally, zoning will roll to different, different zoning districts, it depends on how you do it, but today, the uses that are allowed in the retail district are allowed in the commercial showroom. There are some commercial showroom that will roll to the light industrial, so, you can do that, so that even, you could, if someone wants to locate in the, if a retailer wants to locate in the light industrial district, our code today would allow it.
Oh, would, okay, that was my question.
It depends on how you set your code up, and whether you allow uses in different districts as you go along. Um, in the past, that's what it has been.
Okay, 'cause I wouldn't want him to miss out on opportunity, because we did this for him.
The other thing that you, you had asked us to do, and, and until we get this land use map, um, I have talked to Tammy, and she is able to.
My next question.
Show you, um, the difference between, um, today's land use than the future land use, but you need to get to that map. She, she needs to know how many acres are in each zone compared to what it was before, before she can do her analysis.
So, once we get the map, we get the acres, we can figure out what the, the monetary impact will be to the city's overall plan for the sewer and water?
Yes, she does have to make certain assumptions, the assumptions will be on the bottom.
Sure.
But she said she has to, to do that, and then she'll be able to run the model for you.
And she, when she runs the model, she'll tell us where we're at with the lack of sales and the lack of use of the water and sewer? That, will that show up or not?
I don't think that will show up, because I, I don't think I have those numbers drilled down to that point.
Okay. Okay, anything else on?
What was that?
Is there something here for the Timber Valley Development handout? What was that?
There isn't, that's me.
Okay. All right, Jesse, I think we're done with you, if you wanna, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, but you want to say?
What's what?
In your, in your documents, you have, um.
No, you already did. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Never mind Jeff.
See, statute allows for a subdivision, if you have 40 acres and you're dividing it into two 20s, you're allowed to do a statutory, um, subdivision. It's the only administrative subdivision that we do here in Columbus. Um, Tim Lang, several years ago, tried to do a, an entire subdivision in this area, and this is off of Pine Street, and when he went to Concrete Watersha District, um, Concrete Watersha District told him that because of the Wetland Conservation Act, um, it would not let him what they called island hop, meaning that there were islands of upland, but they would not let him put roads to attach all the upland island, and so, his subdivision was not approved. Since that time, he's sold some pieces, but also, has forever has a few of those pieces. And this particular 40, um, has a fair amount of wetland, but he has decided just to make it into two 20s. So, what you have before you tonight, and what I need approval is, is in this particular case, um, there is an existing, uh, road easement to get to the 40, and in order to do the subdivision, um, they need to put a driveway over that road easement, and we also need a driveway maintenance agreement. So, I need the council to approve the driveway maintenance agreement, and also the acquisition of the drainage and utility easements, and the road easement, um, for this particular subdivision.
That'd be for Extra Street?
Extra Street is already, um, of record.
Okay.
The, the east-west road is what's being dedicated, um, in this subdivision. So, the subdivision meets all the requirements in the ordinance, and the driveway maintenance agreement allows them to have a driveway over the public right-of-way.
And that, would that be vituums, or would that be just a gravel road?
The, the road actually doesn't exist, the road only exists on paper, the only thing they're gonna improve is the driveway.
So, it meets dis, clearances for, for, um, fire trucks and things like that, 16 feet, or whatever it is?
We required, we required 16 feet, and they had to meet the, the elevation, um, for a driveway above water table.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you accept these descriptions that are contained in the statutory subdivision, we would put these into the form of easement agreements?
Uh, Jake's already done it.
Okay.
So, this would be making two 20s for two residences, or would this be? Could these 20s then decide to go, oh, I'm gonna split this up again, and then use our cul-de-sac rule?
Um, no, the, the maintenance agreement says, then I'll improve the road, and there's a certain monetary figures in that maintenance agreement saying, oh, we'll need to improve. Because we allow two houses off an unimproved road.
But once it's improved, then they could do that.
If, if someday they wanted to further simplify it.
Yeah.
Then the maintenance agreement would kick in, and then they would, then we would have a, a road improvement.
Okay. All right, I, I don't see any reason why not to prove this, you guys have any concerns? Concerns, anyone? Someone wanna make a motion to approve or deny this driveway, this, uh, driveway?
Motion to approve the subdivision.
You gotta do the maintenance thing first?
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Why don't you let Bill say it, and then you can say as, that's probably better.
They need to accept the road easements, and then the maintenance.
Yep. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, the, uh, motion would be to accept the, uh, easements, the road easements, the drainage and utility easements, and then the maintenance agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I think Danny got it. All right, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Okay, that's that. Anything else on that, Elizabeth?
Nothing else to know.
Okay, public open forum? Is anyone here for public open forum? Jesse, you were just up here.
This is all in the form of, uh, planning and zoning. So, Mr. Mayor, you know that I wasn't, not completely in favor of the blacktop factory?
I didn't know.
Okay. But then at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the sewer and water going down to him, and Dennis said it was 800,000 or 840, or somewhere in there. So, can we talk, can you re-explain that to me, how that, what happens? We bond for it, it gets assessed to the property owners?
Um, Elizabeth, why don't you, or maybe Bill, you're, you're in on that.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, the way the project would work is very similar to any other, um, extension that's occurred in the freeway district. Uh, the main trunk system, uh, was assessed, um, years ago, and then as, uh, property owners petition for, or the city orders projects, then that, that portion of the project is to the benefited properties. So, the benefited properties, in this case, would be the two properties in the, what we've been calling the triangle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think one of those would qualify for a deferral, so the city would, uh, essentially carry that cost while those assessments are deferred. They're deferred both with, uh, their interest does accrue, so essentially, what happens is, there's accrued interest during that deferral period, so any buyer, um, would either have to pay that, or the seller would have to pay at the time the property is sold. Um, I don't know if, if, the exact numbers, uh, the city engineer has worked up, uh, an estimate, and, uh, as part of the feasibility report, it's roughly $800,000.
Right, and the split was roughly two-thirds, one-third, in round numbers.
So, very similar to when the pipe came past your property.
Yeah. Then also, how does this tie into their host fee that they were talking? There was always discussion at the planning commission that they were gonna toss 80,000 a year or so to Columbus. Does this, since now they have to pay this 800,000, they didn't expect, does that affect that? Is the city gonna see a reduction in?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, if I may, um, the host fee, uh, was a voluntary offer by the property owner, it was never a legal requirement, so whether they pay it at all, or pay it now, or pay it later, is really up to them. Um, we have not, we do not have documentation of their intention, um, to pay a host fee, um, that may occur later, but, uh, for the time being, we are talking to them about their assessments, and those assessments would be under, um, the development agreement that they, that has been drafted, and I think.
We're gonna do chapter 429.
Yeah, right, we're gonna do chapter 429, which is the chapter under state law that provides for special assessments. So, the two are not related, at least in the city's mind. Any discussion of a host fee is purely voluntary, and has not yet been documented.
Let me ask one more question, what is?
Much like, uh, running aces.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
What is the expected tax income to the city from their, from the blacktop factory? 10,000, 20,000, 50,000?
You know, I made a call to Ken to ask that question, and, and he said that there was an original workup for the size of the building they proposed early on. Um, I think the size of the building changed, and a few other things changed, so I think we'd have to rework that estimate, 'cause it's not the same anymore.
The size, yeah, there's some things that have changed since then, which they've, you know what I mean, indicated to, to us, but I don't think a new, I don't think a new estimate was.
We, no, we'd have to do that. I, I did talk to him about the, the, the structure, and whether or not the silos, piles of dirt, scales, whatever they have, is considered personal or real property, and his, uh, interpretation is that that's all personal property, that would not be assessed. So, the structures, the improvements to the ground, the asphalt, all that, that would be real property, would be, but the, um, actual towers, and I asked him whether the concrete itself that holds up all that stuff would be assessed, and he, he wasn't quite sure, but he didn't think so. So, he thinks it's just the structure and the roadway improvements, driveway improvements.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and, you know, the danger in having a dialogue about property values is, it's, it's really not up to the council.
Right.
Um, that's something that's done by the assessor, it'll be done as of January 2nd this year, there'll be no improvement, uh, to the property as of January 2nd, so, assuming there's improvement in the next 12 months, then it might show a partial increase the following January 2nd, and then it's a, a payment a, a year later.
Right.
So, we're really, we're really attempting to project what taxes are three years out, without having complete knowledge about the investment, and that's really not the council's, uh, domain, other than to hear appeals, um, you know.
That's at our April 28th meeting, but, but I think his question was, what's gonna, what was our initial assessment? 'Cause we did have one, but it's no longer valid, because it's, the sizes are all different, so, I think that's where we were going.
Well, what I'm, well.
Go ahead.
Again, I wasn't completely in favor of this, and we were dangled at 80,000 a year to the city, plus 20,000 a year property taxes, but it sounds like the 80,000 just went away, and.
Didn't go away, uh, I want to be.
Or it hasn't.
It's, it was never a legal bind, legally binding requirement, just like when the racetrack offered to pay, uh.
86,000?
86,000 dollars a year to buy fire trucks, or whatever, it's not something that we can legally require, and that's why it's not a condition of approval.
Just like the, just like the tipping fee or whatever they called it.
Well, I think that probably wasn't clear enough, that it was just a possibility of a maybe, that, for what that's done for the district there.
Yeah, and I think in, in all the discussions, I wasn't here when the track came in, that was, as you, you said, dangled out there. But it did come to fruition, so.
In light of the fact, Mr. Mayor, that there's active litigation on this subject matter, I don't think we ought to re-trade the, the whole public record. I mean, these are all valid questions, but there's litigation against the city, and so my recommendation is that we not continue to have discussions about what was said or.
Sure.
Wasn't said, or promised, or wasn't delivered, because, uh, you know, people have chosen to sue the city over this matter, and I don't think we need to create a separate record on this.
I would like to point out to the newspaper lady that the first line in the article was severely wrong, and it's not six or seven Columbus residents.
Not handled.
What, no, but, oh, so you, okay, so, but that was wrong. The paper got that severely wrong.
So in light of the lawsuit, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, um, I think it might be beneficial to us to hold off on any development on the sewer and water down there. And I know I talked to a couple about it before, but I'd hate to go eight hundred thousand in debt and not have anybody paying for it, besides the city Columbus. We've already got a lot of debt we're into, and I think we should wait on that. Put all surveys and everything else on hold, engineering work. That's my thought on that.
Did you read the lawsuit?
I read what they handed me.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, I would recommend that any discussion of the lawsuit occur with the league-appointed council.
Yeah.
In a closed session.
Okay. Duly noted. Any other comments? Okay. Anyone else for public open forum? Okay, here, now move on to the Rice Creek watershed letter, pages thirty-three and thirty-four.
So, I wanted to support certain legislation, legislation, and I brought it before the council to see if there is something you would like to do in addressing the letter. Was there a resolution to support?
What were they?
Or lobbyists to support it, you know, what, what's the direction?
So I, I didn't look up HS twenty-six eighty-seven. Mr. Griffith, have you read that one?
Nope.
Or the SF twenty-four nineteen?
I have not.
Elizabeth? Um, suppose you could've gone to the website and Googled that one, but.
It's, uh, it's, um, it's public drainage system law.
So do you, do you have any comment on it? Or does the engineer have any comment on the content of those two?
I did not look that up either.
Okay.
Do you want us to do that and come back?
I, I think, I think we should. I mean, do we have another meeting before we need to do this? Because I, without, I, I have, I didn't look it up either, so I, whether I support it or not is, I don't normally support anything they do, so I, I can't, I can't say I do, but, um, Bill, you.
Are we, are we at the end of session now that it?
No, I think, uh, we, May twentieth, I think, we require a adjournment, so there's still time to come back and clarify what the, what the bill does and see whether you support it.
So i- is Rice Creek asking us to support this or not to?
So what they did was, they sent a letter saying that, um, you know, they're making us aware of these legislative issues in the, in the legislative session. Um, then they go on to say what, you know, what the requirements are and they, how they don't want to, to apply public, to public ditch systems. And then they went on to give us a little bit of background related to those house file, or the house file and, um, senate file.
Right.
I don't, I don't actually have the legislation, just the background that they gave us.
Right, so without reading that, the, the letter didn't make a lot of sense to me because it references stuff that you would have to know by. So either, either we should all read that, get that, maybe you can get that email to us or something?
Yeah, I think generally, um, you know, the party in favor of legislation, summarizing the legislation, you know, may.
Bad idea.
May take a view that, that you don't share. So I think the best way to understand it is to, to read the law.
Right.
Read the proposed bill.
Is it a long one?
It's ditch law, I imagine it's very complicated. We could just, we could just, in the meantime, say we're aware of it and not spend any money on researching at all, or.
Well, we wouldn't have to spend any money researching if you could just, we could all just go to the link and read it, I guess, I.
This paragraph pretty much explains that the Rice Creek is not in favor of this, and it looks like it's gonna cost more money and take more time to get stuff done. Second paragraph, second page of this. Says goes beyond the authority granted by the legislators. And like always, the DNR is constantly overstepping their.
Is it? That's another lawsuit we can't talk about because we're in a lawsuit, Bill.
Yeah.
Oh, not yet? Oh, we'll get that going. Okay, um, all right, I say we just can, continue this until we can read it and make our own decision on that. What do you think?
Up to you.
Bring it back in two weeks.
Read it back. Do a little better homework on that one?
Yep.
Okay, all right, moving on then, um, engineers' report. I promise I'm not gonna forget you this time, okay? I'm just, it's this big, big huge red thing, and I'm gonna put this right here so I remember. Go ahead.
I just wanted to provide you a quick update on the I-3597 design-build project from what I know, and since it's a design-build project, it, you know, is allowed to change.
Yep.
Weekly or monthly. Actually, construction would have started already had we not had our multiple snowstorms in April, so.
Another one coming.
Another one coming this weekend. So the first thing you'll likely see is the, the way they're splitting up the project is two thousand eighteen on thirty-five will be north of ninety-seven. And the two thousand nineteen on thirty-five will be south of ninety-seven. Now ninety-seven itself will be both years. And depending on right of way they're acquiring or not able to acquire kind of dictates where they're gonna be working on ninety-seven. So we do know the bridge, the north, the new part of the bridge will be built this summer. And actually, I do have some, um, traffic control plans. I can try to explain it a little better.
Great.
So what I'm showing here is ninety-seven interchange over thirty-five.
Smell bacon.
So the, um, off-ramp, ninety-seven, the on-ramp, or, um, southbound ramps. And what this, this was submitted in the minutet, it's not approved yet, so this again. I'm showing you, but I'm not any, I'm not, but this just shows that the north half of the bridge will be built first, and that likely would be early summer this year. And they'll also start some improvements on the south side of ninety-seven, east of the interchange, as part of that diverging diamond, um, lanes come down, so you can see that. And this is, um, this is part of the south. So they'll be working on the south side of ninety-seven and a transition lane that runs east of it.
Will, will that take in the accommodations for the new stoplight there?
Yes.
Extra lane?
Yes and no, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
But it will ultimately. Um, there's two projects going on. One is a design-build project I'm showing here, and the other one is Hornsby Street realignment to the north, which the county went out for, the county's leading that because they're getting, um, local road improvement funds, so that the city will have little or no cost. And they went out for competitive process, and TKDA was the one that was selected to do that for now, so we're finalizing the contract. So we'll have input on behalf of the city for Hornsby Street north and the signal. So the, the bridge, the north half of the bridge is the first step. Um, probably mid to late summer, they'll transition, uh, traffic to the, the south side of ninety-seven, which was constructed on the last drawings. And they'll start in the north, um, part of the diverging diamond, and approaches up to the new bridge. So traffic will remain on the existing bridge, one lane each way, um, for that phase. Then there's a portion of, well, the traffic will transition over to the new bridge and will have to drop, drop the old bridge. And this is showing this, this piece will be dropped. They'll close ninety-seven for one weekend, and that will likely be the fall of eighteen. And, but these, and these are traffic plans, so they're showing, they'll actually barricade ninety-seven, and freeway traffic will come up and over the ramps for one weekend. So if they're going northbound on thirty-five, they'll help the off-ramp and just shoot across to the on-ramp, because ninety-seven will be closed for one weekend, um, which should be interesting.
Uh-huh.
And then, again, this should happen likely this fall was the last I heard.
There'll be cars all the way to St. Paul.
And then, once the, the old bridge is dropped, they'll construct, the, the, they'll reconstruct the south half of the new bridge in its place. So this is likely what you'll see over next winter, because this traffic will be one in each direction on the new bridge, the new half of the bridge. And there'll be a, a little bit of a transition here, um, to get to the existing, um, lake drive. So there's gonna be a lot going on in this interchange. Because what I haven't talked about yet was, here's, um, Hornsby Street, um, existing, proposed Hornsby Street to the north. That alignment's not correct, it's gonna come up and escort over. But the design-build project will probably build everything up to the west side of Hornsby. And then the Hornsby Street realignment project will, will Hornsby Street, the signal, and there'll be an extra lane on ninety-seven eastbound that would also be part of those improvements. And there'll be some work actually on the stoplight, because the optimal configuration will be, as you approach the intersection, there'll be three lanes, a separate left, a through and a right, turn lane. So if you're coming down Hornsby, there'll be three lanes approaching ninety-seven, a left, a through and a right, same as the approaching Hornsby from the south, or approaching ninety-seven on Hornsby from the south, there'll be a, a left, a through and a right, so all the signal lanes line up.
Be one lane the other way, though?
One lane.
Coming in.
Going north and going south.
Yeah.
And, uh, for rerarences for truck, terrain improvements. And then ninety-seven itself will have a left, a separate left, a separate right, and two through lanes in each direction to line up with the diverging diamond. And as you go east, that cycle lane will drop.
Will that light and the light at the diverging diamond be timed with the light by QuickTrip?
It'll be, um, I'm not sure about QuickTrip. Uh, they were talking about interconnected.
Okay.
Definitely, uh, two lights on the bridge and Hornsby light will be interconnected.
Not the Zurich Street light, though?
No. So that's, uh, status today. And Hornsby Street, the design will be this year and the construction will be two thousand nineteen. But most of the minuts project will be designed on, on, ninety-seven will be done this year. So you see a lot of construction west of Hornsby this year, and then the intersection east of Hornsby actually.
Are those gonna be variable timed lights, so the time of day is gonna determine the cycles? Do you know, is that, talk about that?
Typically, they'll, um, they have sensors and.
Okay.
Because definitely there's, you know, traffic close, so.
Right, differently, yeah.
But, um, it's basically the update I have for you on how staging is gonna happen. On actually, on thirty-five itself, you'll see two lanes in each direction as they do transitions. Um, and northbound, you'd actually have one lane on the, on the west side. So you have two lanes coming down, one lane going north, and then you'll have the median, and then you have a, a second lane going north. So if you want to get off on Broadway, there'll be signs that you gotta be in the right northbound.
Oh, so they're gonna have an express lane like they did on six ninety-four?
Yeah, so the, the other one will be like a flyby.
Yeah.
So you wanna get in the correct lane.
Or you're going to North Branch.
Why not? Any questions on any of that?
They got, they moved bulldozers in the back holes up to Highway eight. This last week, they moved them around, and they took all the trees down, so they're getting close.
Yeah, I presume, I mean, there's work out where, where they're gonna have a bash plant there, and they clear, they keep clearing the snow up. Um, they'll be assembling that this month.
Looks like they left a few trees there, at the very northern piece, yeah.
Yeah, I think Bill was talking somewhere else.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I know you were talking about by eight, but I, they did leave.
Back holes and the pool, it's all lined up against the on, off-ramp or on-ramp on eight, now they moved them up, so we're getting ready.
So after this weekend's storm, and that gets up to sixty degrees next week, they'll probably start seeing work on thirty-five.
Somebody asked me this, so are they gonna do the white topping first? Or, because they, they can't do the white topping and leave that existing bridge, so they must not be doing the white topping there until they replace the bridge.
So when I say like the eighteen construction on thirty-five is north of ninety-seven, it's a little bit north.
Right.
Right at the bridge.
Okay, so they'll have the.
Until they drop the old one.
Right.
Uh, this fall.
Okay. Do they have any more questions?
Nope.
All right, what else you got? That's all you have? Okay, Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Mayor and Council, in your packet is, or is A-two handout is the resolution expressing support for two projects identified in the corridors of commerce program. Uh, these are projects that were identified by the public to minutet, and in order to make them a priority, um, they look for community support. Doesn't mean that they're necessarily gonna be constructed anytime soon, but it certainly gives them better point scoring if the community supports the projects. The two projects were a four-lane expansion of trunk highway ninety-seven from I-35 to highway sixty-one, so essentially the area that we were just talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, two lanes, um, from thirty-five E and two lanes from thirty-five W, uh, where they come together, and then one lane on the, on the right-hand side would turn into an exit lane. Um, so at, at your last meeting, you generally supported the concepts and asked that we bring back a resolution that you could approve.
So that's in A-two, where's A-two?
The resolution is the, the corridors of commerce program where they actually have the projects.
So just to be clear, this includes no minutet lanes? I'm kidding. Then I'm all for it.
And the council was in support of it at your last meeting, we just didn't have a resolution. Didn't draft one until you indicated support.
Yeah.
And the program requires a resolution from the governing body.
Anyone want to approve this resolution? Eighteen something?
Prove resolution eighteen-ten, support for projects submitted in the corridor of commerce program?
Make a resolution, do, do you want to approve it or deny it?
Support.
You want to support it?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to support it. Do we have a second?
Second.
He got you.
Always.
All right, any other discussion? You can hand that back. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. The ayes have it.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? You sure you don't want to talk about a lawsuit or two?
No.
Okay, check it. All right, council report. Uh, Bill Griffith, or Bill Grubbs.
Yeah, my, my first maintenance, well, yeah, first maintenance building after dinner meeting.
Oh, how'd that go?
Uh, went good. I don't know, they get, I mean, we're doing some, they're trying to, you know, get, change out equipment progressively over a certain amount of years, and there's some stuff that needs to be replaced. So we got a ninety-seven Ford truck that's ready to fall apart that needs to be replaced and some other stuff.
Like they're gonna need a snow blower too for the walkways.
They, they got one already, haven't they?
Yeah, they got one. It's there.
Possession.
That one might get repossessed. That one might get repossessed, but, um, yeah, they probably.
I got a, I got a chance to see our maintenance building with all the equipment in it, she's pretty full. I mean, I remember being on that committee and thinking, well, this building's huge. Well, they filled her up. You know, they.
Sorry, Jeff.
We got a plow truck, yes, they did, didn't they? We got a plow truck that's, that's gonna need to be replaced. I think it's the Mack. Or is it the Sterling, Danny?
I don't know.
It's the Mack. It's got, it's, huh? It's the Sterling? Yeah, it's got electrical issues and it's breaking down on the side of the road, and it's been there a couple times to get fixed, apparently. So, you know, we've got some other issues we gotta talk about. They're talking about wanting to replace the road grader. I'm not too sure I'm on board with that, just because it's.
I kind of agree with you.
It's an older one that's not, doesn't run on def fluid. We really haven't had any issues with it. I don't know, I mean. We really haven't had any issues with it. I don't know, I mean, so there's a few things that gotta be. But it's, it's very interesting, you know, they, very good group of guys. They seem to get along really well, and JW does a very good job of conducting a meeting, so he's a salesman. I mean that kiddingly, but...
Yeah.
So, yeah, we got to see the new, uh, the new tractor with the new mowers on it, the different sized mowers that are able to put on it and all that other stuff.
They didn't by chance get the logos increased yet or getting, uh...
We didn't discuss logos, but I...
You didn't?
Bring that up.
I was at the council direction, remember?
Didn't get them. I was, I was too overwhelmed with all the equipment and all the dollar amounts.
You on that just once or you're just on that? Are you on that now? Or did, did you give that up?
I'd like to get it back.
Actually, you can have it after, no, I just don't want, I don't want, uh, Sunrise Water set back, so...
No, it's, nobody knows about that yet.
No, it's very, it's very, it's very interesting, so...
Okay.
But there's a, there's a lot of equipment out there and there's a lot of...
The hot tire patch thing, is that, they using that?
Yeah, but they're not gonna use it in the wintertime, so it doesn't get destroyed. I mean, they've, JW is very conscious about it. It seems like what equipment goes out and gets full of salt and what equipment doesn't, whatever, so I, I don't know. I'm, I'm a beginner, so I'm in the beginning stages.
Looks to me like they're doing a lot of their own repair, which I think is a good, as much as they can, so...
Yeah, there's some, there's some repairs going on there, but this Sterling thing, that's kinda bothers me that you can take a piece of equipment out on the road and be plowing with it, and in order to get it to restart after it dies, you yank a wire. Well, the city's had it in to get repaired three or four times and they can't figure it out. It's an electrical issue. It should not be our divine, so... But to have our guys on the side of the road yanking a wire in the dark in the snow trying to get something restarted...
I used to have a truck like that. I sold it.
So, there's some issues there, but I think there's some, there's some things too that down the road we may have to think twice about some stuff, so... Elizabeth, is that, so, uh, I got, it's like my, the, the building inspector's truck.
Building, pardon me?
That truck can get handed down and, and used in the place of the Ford.
Is that all roughed it out?
Uh, just the quarters in the back.
That, um, that's due to be, uh, traded out. I wanna say it's next year, 'cause I think that'll be fifteen years old.
Yeah, I think that thing needs to go. It's pretty rusty.
The building inspector's truck is that bad?
I don't think it's that good. They, they've repaired it a couple times.
But we, yeah, that we have...
Yeah, it's, once the cancer comes, it...
But JW's talking about his truck going down to the, take the place of the Ford.
Right, 'cause this is a two thousand nine, I think, and the Ford is a nineteen ninety-nine.
And some of the reason for that is there's a lot of times that staff rides together on stuff. And so the crew cab, he feels will work out better than just an extended cab, so...
Okay.
So, that we'll be talking about. He's talking about wanting to trade off, start trading off trucks every three years and I don't...
That's a little soon.
Yeah, I think so too, seeing that you have a bumper to bumper for five on the GMs, so... I don't know, something, it's just all being talked about. It's pretty interesting.
Glad you're on it. Glad you like it. Sorry, Danny.
Yeah, Danny, I don't like being there.
All right, anything else?
No.
Okay, Jeff?
Cable Commission met today. Uh, LATV and the high school are in cahoots. They're gonna put in a studio there and maybe, uh...
Finally?
Yeah, high school's gonna take over some stuff.
Oh, I've been pushing for that for a long time.
Gonna do that. I think we're gonna keep our offices at the Senior Center, Forest Lake Senior Center.
Very inexpensive.
Yeah. Uh, we agreed to put most purchases on hold until we get it upgraded here. We talked about...
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
So we put that in... I do need to get ahold of Paul because they, we need to find some cheaper...
Here's, well, he's getting one more bid from, uh, people that did Maranatha. This is the spec book, uh, the last bid.
Can I have that?
You can have that.
Thank you.
And, uh, accounting services are gonna be done by Scandia, and that's a two-year contract.
County services?
Accounting.
Accounting services.
Accounting services. We're in the process of drawing up a contract, signing that. That's all I have.
Okay, this'll be some good nighttime reading. Mark?
I have nothing today.
Danny?
We had a Sunrise meeting, uh, last week, uh, short meeting, went through with no problem. So far.
Okay.
What's their goals for this next year?
Spend money.
Carp?
Oh, they, they did nothing like that been talked yet. They got their, uh, comp plan or management plan coming through. They're working on that there. That's what they're really doing right now. And there's money out there, there's programs out there that, uh, how much money, Elizabeth, was it?
Honestly, didn't, a hundred and sixty-two thousand or s- in that range that they're gonna get for programs.
They're gonna get some money that, but they gotta find programs to get the money. They just wanna give it to them, but they gotta find a program for the money, and they will. There's a lot of things out there that has to be done.
Okay, so yeah? Okay, uh, I've been feverishly working with the surrounding mayors and county to talk about the new entrance and exit on thirty-five and E and W. It's gonna be an uphill battle, but, um, I think at some point we'll be looking for a resolution to support for, um, one, either one-seventieth or one-eightieth for where to put it.
One-seventieth is in Hugo, is that, I got the...
Well, they're both in Lionel, well, the, one-seventieth would be all in Lionel Lakes, and one-eightieth would be half in Lionel Lakes and half in, in, uh, Columbus, so...
But it, one-e, one-seventieth has to run through part of Hugo, doesn't it? On the...
Um, it, it would all run through Hugo, so it'd be less valuable...
Columbus four?
Yeah, it depends where it's, something different everywhere you look at that thing, but... 'Cause it's two counties and it's two cities and...
I've spent on the comp plan for twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, and that's the whole crux of it, is everyone said, oh, yeah, that's in our comp plan. We want it there, from the county to Washington County to Hugo. And, yeah, it has been there, but if you look at their plan, it goes across a mile of pristine wetland.
It's never gonna happen.
It'll never happen, so, so that's, that's our, our hope is...
Get some exit entrance ramps on there, you would think.
Our hope is to move it to a hundred and eightieth. It does Columbus way more value, it does Forest Lake way more value, and I think it'll be of value to both Lino and, and Hugo. And, uh, eventually we'll get everybody on board.
It's a dirt road, city street, dead end, we'll get to the feelings, I'd like to be...
Right now, it's really nothing. Actually, there's an area across Columbus and an area across, uh, Forest Lake where it's just a dirt road.
The dead ends at Lyons.
Yeah.
Right just, just south of, uh, Tom.
Yeah, so we have, uh, a whole list of pros and cons for each position of it, and we're gonna try to get that list expounded on and, uh, distributed and talked about because now's the time to get the comp plans amended for everybody. I think the only other thing I have is I, I talked to JW about the fire barns, getting some new signs up there. So I, I didn't have time to come up with a plan or proposal for that yet, but I'll, uh, he's gonna get me the dimensions and throw something by here so we can get that relabeled, 'cause right now it says nothing. Not even an address. All right, that's all I have. Um, JW's not here, so we'll move on to the public information...
JW does, does have a topic.
He, it's not on here. You're gonna be...
Oh, I'll, uh, I'll be JW's voice today.
Okay.
So, um, Jim was contacted by Willie Davis, um, once again on Pine Street. And he feels at this time that the original cross-section for Pine Street, when the ditch was looked at, he feels that his culvert elevation was not identified, uh, on that sheet. And he does not wanna go to his neighbors without knowing what the culvert elevation is and which direction the water runs from his property. And so, he's asking the council to allow TKDA to go back out and shoot the elevation of the ditch, so you could determine which way the water runs. And then he said he would go out to his neighbors for a petition for, uh, any ditch work that needs to be done in order for the water to flow.
Didn't I just see this in the packet, the drawing we had last, this one?
Dennis, is that right? They didn't do his for some reason?
Yeah, his culvert was, was not able to be located. It's buried, it's plugged, it's on water, it's full. So, they shot the whole ditch. I guess the point is, we can do that, but I don't know if it matters, because the water elevation's the same on both sides. So whether his culvert's, you know, up here or down here, it, it's the same on both sides, but... Um, it would, you know, it just needs to be uncovered.
We've got the elevations, right?
Not for his, not for his culvert. His culvert was buried.
Why, why does that matter? I mean, if you're gonna dig the culverts off, put new culverts and clean the ditch out, who cares where his ditch culvert's at?
The, one simple thing to do with this, now that it's probably wet, is see if the water is the same elevation on both sides. 'Cause then it really wouldn't matter, you know, if it's a lot higher on one side, then it's buried, if his, if he had a functioning culvert.
Well, right, it is driveway, it's really wet if I remember, isn't it? I mean, the whole thing is wet.
So...
I'm not sure what, uh...
Yeah, can you articulate that one more time, why he wants his driveway culvert shot? If it's underwater and non-functional?
In his mind, it's very important to have the driveway culvert shot at what elevation it is, because he feels that it will determine whether the water runs east or west from his driveway.
Is that, Dennis says it, make any sense to you?
No, it won't determine which way the water runs. It will just determine how much of a barrier his driveway is to the ditch. Like, we, we surveyed the whole thing and it's basically zero grade from, for the whole distance. Whether his culvert points one way or the other is irrelevant.
Isn't it flowing towards the west? That's west, right?
About that much.
Right, but it's flowing that way.
And Mr. Mayor, isn't this relating to the last direction back to him was that if, if we, he wanted an improvement project, he'd need to sign up his neighbors?
Right, they'd come in and ask for it.
He is saying that he doesn't want, he won't go to his neighbors until, I don't know what the relationship is to the culvert. Jim had a lengthy conversation with him.
Yeah, I talked with Jim briefly too, and it was basically what you said, that he, he felt before he would talk to his neighbors, that he wanted to know which, what elevation his driveway culvert was at. And, again, it's, it's somewhat irrelevant.
Okay, so I think we should just go back to him with that opinion from our engineer, and he'll have to go or no-go. I, I don't think we wanna spend any more money with people going out and...
Whoever you know, we gotta clean the ditch out, put the culvert, send a little business in there.
Right. You got anything else for JW that's not on the list here?
That concludes JW's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, public information corners here. Don't tell me nothing.
I have something.
Okay, good.
I'm working on your, uh, Columbus newsletter. I just wanted to give you a brief update. Um, I think it'll be ready to go out in May or June, but if we're doing a biannual, I'm kind of thinking maybe from one in June and then one in December, nice evening split. We have the opportunity in April to purchase Photoshop as well as a better version of Acrobat. Um, and I think that'll be really useful for me to format the newsletter, so once we get that, I can really rock it and roll and get that one.
Yeah, is that the, uh, monthly version or is that the pay per month to use it or is that the full one?
Uh, no, it's a state thing, so you pay once a year.
Okay, so it's a monthly?
Yeah, but the...
Yearly? Annual subscription?
Yeah, and I think you get a three-year, whatever. For, you're gonna see that in the next couple weeks.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
You forgot one thing.
Did she?
What she told you last week, or two weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
She would go, what aren't you doing anymore?
Oh, you're not sending out the, the blue sheets, remember, the green sheets?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna stop printing the minutes. We're gonna save some paper.
Okay.
I email them to you before the meeting is over.
Okay. All right, um, City Administrator Report, before you start, I'll say, you don't have on here, but you, you wanna explain kind of the, the cellphone thing that, that came up about this priority service thing?
Oh.
I think it's important.
AT&T has a, a service that if the city of Columbus has an emergency and cellphone service is out, or, um, there's so much traffic...
Flooded.
I'm sorry?
Flooded.
Flooded, sure. So much traffic that it's flooded, the system is flooded, that it fails. Um, AT&T has a program where it has priority service for emergency management. And fire, um, Al Newman has, who is our fire chief, has already talked to AT&T about this service, and he's already signed up the fire department. And what he indicated to Jim Winningstead was that he would also list our public works department as priority, and should they need them, they will then, their self-service would go on to the priority system. And then they would also have self-aware service so that they could talk to fire and police at the same time. So, nice service for emergency management, so that their cell, cellphones will work during an emergency within the city.
So, um, JW, the, the maintenance crew will be on that and who else?
Right now, it'll be fire and public works.
Okay. All right, all right, continue, sorry.
The, um, Bill Warner, who is our new accountant, has assured me that at the next meeting, we should, um, be up and running with the treasures report. And so we'll come back to you with that information. And at the current time, um, if you saw in the bills, we, um, the city gets billed for certain things in May and October. It's usually just special assessments and solid waste. In this particular case, they came, uh, both together, the bill for last year's herbicide treatment for the Coon Lake, um, district or the association. And then we also received a letter in our agenda packet on page forty-five. And what it, what it indicates is, um, you can opt out of the program to treat your shore, the shoreline of your property, but you will still get charged. It's just an, so there are some people who just wanna opt out of the program because they feel that they don't want their shoreline to be treated. The fee for this year was twenty-five dollars. So, you can opt out, your choices to opt out and still pay, or to opt in and get the treatment and still pay.
You guys have a preference?
Pay for it, just we'll use it.
Why would you do that?
You're gonna pay for it either way.
Oh, I thought you said pay for it and don't use it.
No, no, just we'll use it.
Okay, I agree. What do you guys think?
It's nothing we gotta do. It's for landowners, homeowners?
The city of Columbus owns three lots at Coon...
Oh, our lots.
Is there any way of disposing of them? They're useless lots. I mean, I, I have no reason why we need them.
I agree, and...
There just...
It's not for park.
There's a process, yeah, there's a, there's a statutory process for determining if land is excess the city needs, and then you can make it, once you determine that, you can make it available for sale.
I mean, who, who in their right mind would buy that to pay taxes on it?
That's the issue, is...
They're not buildable.
No.
Well, who would wanna own it other than the DNR? Can't we give it to them in lieu of something else?
It will go to the DNR. Um, land on public waters automatically goes to the DNR if the, if the city doesn't. If the city didn't take it 'cause they were tax forfeiture, it would have automatically gone to the state, because parcels on public waters generally forfeit to the state.
Well, we just traded it to them.
Well, let's just keep it then for a while until we can throw it in as a chip on something.
I agree, I just don't wanna give it to them, we don't know.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna, we wanna give them the twenty-five bucks, or what do you think?
Give them twenty-five bucks. Give it to them.
You're gonna pay any, either way.
Okay, so let's...
Whether you want herbicide or not.
Let's do it. You guys wanna make a motion to that?
You don't have to do anything if you're not requesting that to be sprayed.
Okay.
Wait, opting, opting out, you have to sign.
Okay.
Staying in, just...
All right, well then, let's just move on if you guys are okay with that.
The only other announcement I, uh, wanna make is the local board of appeal and equalization is on April twenty-third. So our next meeting is on April twenty-fifth, so it's the Monday before our next meeting.
And do you wanna make the, um, paragraph E announcements so we don't have to reopen after the closed session?
Planning commission meeting will, um, there'll be a planning commission meeting both in April and May, both, all their meetings. I have applications for all of them.
Okay.
The next, the next meeting is for running aces. It's the hotel and preliminary plat.
Nice. All right, anything else? Your agenda there, Elizabeth? Nothing?
I have nothing else.
Okay, so then at this point, we need to, uh, exercise a closed meeting under State Statute Section thirteen D, point zero five subdivision three C, to develop or consider an offer, account or offers for the sale of city-owned Quad Thirty-five property. So, we'll adjourn just for a second here to let the cameras and the people exit. So, we'll adjourn just for a second here to let the cameras and the people exit.